Not seeing any hands go up. Oh, yes, I did. Sorry. Katrina?
Brenda get introduced?
Is Brenda here? Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda. Brenda, I didn't see you. I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I joined late. I'm Brenda Johnson. I serve as the Oregon Health Policy Board liaison to the Healthcare Workforce Committee. And my day job is the CEO of La Clinica, federally qualified health center in Southern Oregon. And I'm looking forward to the public comment.
Thank you, Brenda. And then I see Katrina, you have your hand raised. So if you could please introduce yourself and we'll give you maybe three to four minutes of public comment.
Perfect. Good morning, everyone. My name's Katrina Doughty. I use the pronouns she, her, and hers. And I am new to a position that I want to share with you all. I was just hired with Foley as the healthcare innovation specialist. And so right now, we have money with Future Ready Oregon, where we are working, or I am working, to create apprenticeships in a field that has very few apprenticeships. One reason that this is so important and why I'm so excited to do this in healthcare is that historically, mostly male-dominated fields had apprenticeships, which means you got paid to learn and then become a thriving part of the workforce in your chosen field. So construction, ironworkers, electricians. Historically, female-dominated roles, or soft sciences, as they're called, which is incorrect, such as healthcare, was pay-to-play. So you pay for your education and you hope to get a job. Meaning, a lot of folks are starting out with a deficit and having to pay off significant debt. And so we're really excited to try to create apprenticeship programs so that folks can get paid for building those skills and learning that important knowledge. And we can reinvigorate our healthcare workforce. We do have a few existing healthcare apprenticeships, like medical assisting, as well as drug and alcohol treatment, peer support specialists, and early childhood education specialists. And we're working on building more. And so I just wanted to flag for this group that that is something that we currently have grant funding for. And we are taking applications for. The new application period for our fourth series starts November 3rd. But I'm starting right now to gather interest from folks. We have already had interest discussions from folks that are hoping to make lab, medical lab assistant apprenticeship programs. Folks who are hoping to make BIPOC, doula, and midwifery apprenticeship programs to really address maternal mortality. And some more interest in increasing the medical assistant apprenticeship program. So I want to introduce myself, let you know that that's something we're working on. I'm happy to share information or follow up with links and my email. But I just wanted to say hello to this group.
Thank you so much for that, Katrina. Welcome and thank you again. If you could put your email in the chat, if you wouldn't mind. And then, folks, if they would like to get in touch with you, they could. That'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, and I don't see any other public comment. I didn't see any other hands raised. So we'll go ahead and move on. We are going to talk about the workforce nursing study. We're going to have a great presentation and discussion. And I just want to preface that by introducing a couple of folks that have been working really, really hard on this. The first is, I didn't see Troy here, Mark. Is Troy, are you here?
No, I believe Troy is still on vacation.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
For presentation.
Okay, perfect. Troy Larkin is a committee member, and he has been working really hard. We also have Joanne Spetz with us. And she is with the Institute for Health Policy Studies at the University of California, San Francisco. And Dr. Spetz's research focuses on the economics of healthcare workforce. So we've been really lucky to have her on this project with us. And we also have with us Jana Bitten, who is the Executive Director at the Oregon Center for Nursing. And, you know, it's, it's great to have Dr. Spetz here. She directs the federally funded UCSF Healthcare Workforce Research Center on Long-Term Care. And this is a, this is an organization and a workforce study. And it generates evidence to ensure an adequate workforce to provide patient-centered care. And I was lucky enough to sit in on a couple of the workforce discussion meetings that they had. And I felt a little bit out of my comfort zone because we were talking nursing and not teeth and dentistry. But I will tell you that I learned a lot. And so I just want to thank you all for all of your hard work on this. This was directed by House Bill 4003 to study the workforce shortage for nursing. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Joanne and Jana. And welcome, and thank you so much for being here.
It always helps if I unmute. Thank you so much. And I have to say, my colleague Beth Mertz here is doing some work with Walamit Dental around innovative pediatric programs in Oregon. So I have, I've learned a lot about oral health in Oregon as well. There's a lot of innovation in that space. So I am happy to be here. I want to acknowledge our partners in this work, the Oregon Center for Nursing. So Jana Bitten and Rick are both here in Zoom. I did not spot my UCSF colleagues Timothy Bates and Emily Shen. But I think they both probably have already started jumping into other projects. But they might pop in later. But they've been really important. I also want to acknowledge that we had an advisory group for this that was chartered by the Oregon Health Healthcare Workforce Committee. And that was a fabulous group of people, as well as several people from this committee were very helpful with support and comments throughout the study. That includes Laura, that includes Paul Gorman, Kurt Stilp were particularly supportive of this work. And Troy Larkin, of course, was, was really helpful. And we also want to acknowledge that Representative Rachel Pruzak supported, sponsored the legislation that made this work possible and provided us with feedback as well. So, so let's see, without further ado, I will share my screen so that I can tell you what we learned. Hopefully, that is showing properly. Let me know if there is any problem with the visibility. So this work, as I said, was collaborative with the Oregon Center for Nursing and with a lot of great support. So what I'm going to do is actually just run through the conclusions, the main conclusions of the report. The report itself is, oh, gosh, about 70 pages. I think that's where it ended up, somewhere around that range. So I'm not going to make you listen to all 70 pages of it. But I will talk about the high-level conclusions and the recommendations. The body of the report does have substantive information that supports all of the recommendations. And we can talk about that. I am assuming the normal order of events is to run through the presentation and then to take comments. And I'm looking at Mark's Zoom square. He is nodding his head, so we will do that. Great. So conclusions, I mean, first, and probably obviously, the reason that this, that HB 4003 was passed is that there are concerns about widespread nursing shortages in Oregon. And we heard that in our interviews and, and also in just looking at the data that we had available. There clearly are widespread shortages happening right now. These are really associated with high rates of burnout, which was a concern in the nursing workforce before COVID-19. So we need to be aware that that was an existing challenge and concern and problem for the nursing workforce. And the pandemic exacerbated it and made it more obvious. But it's not a brand-new concern. Nurses and employers are both deeply concerned about this. We, you know, we heard this from pretty much everybody we spoke with, that there are concerns straight across the board from all employment sectors, as well as a number of educators also were very concerned about this. But since the nursing shortages really hit home for the employment sector and for nurses themselves, we heard it from nursing organizations, we heard it from nurses directly, from employers across sectors. The causes differ. There, there were some points of consensus around the causes of shortages, one of which was burnout. But some of the details and the relative importance of causes differed by regions and by type of healthcare setting. And there actually is really kind of a lack of data to fully assess the extent and the depth of nursing shortages. What data we have suggests and corroborates our understanding that there are shortages. But, for example, there aren't really systematic surveys about vacancies currently in Oregon. So we can't tell you, you know, oh, the vacancy rate is so much higher for this sector versus that sector. Or for this kind of specialty versus that specialty. We just simply don't have those data to really go into depth on it. But nonetheless, we believe it's a problem. So Oregon's nursing workforce is severely stressed. And the pandemic, as I mentioned, revealed and exacerbated problems that existed already. And most other states are facing similar challenges. So in, Jana and I both have interactions with nursing leaders from across the US. And we're pretty much hearing the same thing almost everywhere, with different levels of severity and different details in some cases. But the overall themes are the same, that there's just a lot of stress about the nursing workforce right now. This slide duplicated. Sorry about that. Okay, we've got some weird things happening with the slides in my download. Sorry. Let's see. So nurse workload is a concern among both nurses and their employers. Oregon's nurse staffing law is not, was not viewed by many of the people that we interviewed as fully achieving the goal of ensuring adequate staffing for high-quality patient care. And we heard those concerns across multiple sectors. So this wasn't just nursing organizations. We also heard employers express concerns that the staffing law was not fully achieving what its intentions were. But there were differences of opinion about why this may be the case. There were some concerns about the complexity of the survey process and the complexity of the rules that made it hard to really follow the spirit of what the regulations are intended to achieve. There were some perceptions that enforcement was not as rigorous as intended. And there has been no objective evaluation of the overall outcomes of the law. So there are a lot of perceptions that it's not achieving what it's intended to. But there has not been a kind of neutral third party to do an analysis about what the impact has been. So it doesn't mean that it's a bad law or a good law. It's just that we don't have a lot of information to know where there might be refinements or an objective assessment of it made these things better, but these things still need attention. The data nationally indicate that nurse staffing in Oregon hospitals is somewhat higher than the national average, which is good news. But what we don't know is whether that's kind of good enough. And because there may be differences in the acuity of patients in the hospitals or differences in the underlying needs of patients or in staffing needs to address cultural competency. As well as the data that we can get from the American Hospital Association tell us about RNs, LPNs, and AIDS. But they don't tell us about the other support staff that are really important to nurses being able to do their work. You know, the reality is, if an organization is facing a shortage of janitorial staff, the registered nurse will empty the garbage cans if needed. And that is certainly not using the RN skills to the maximum level of their knowledge and capabilities. But, you know, generally, when there are staffing shortages, the work falls onto the RN. It's just the way that, or that these things tend to play out because RNs are everywhere and they're doing a lot of work. So some more conclusions. Growth in new enrollments in RN programs has slowed over the past three years. And we also saw declines in LPN enrollments. We don't entirely know why the enrollments are declining in full scope. You know, this isn't that necessarily the slots available to enroll students have changed, but the numbers enrolling appear to have dropped a bit. Education programs are struggling to grow due to difficulty recruiting faculty and finding clinical placements for their students. So these aren't necessarily reasons that the available slots have shrunk, but it also means that programs are struggling to grow. The faculty shortages were widely attributed to low salaries for nursing faculty compared with clinical salaries, up to 40% lower. So this is not like, oh, they're getting paid 10% less. This is a substantial difference between what clinical jobs for master's degree-educated nurses pay versus what faculty positions pay. And there were also shortages of clinical placements that were attributed to a number of factors that I think we'll get into a little bit more when we talk about the recommendations. And then finally, what, one of the factors that may be associated with the slowed, kind of the slowed growth in enrollments and programs, is actually that applications to RN education programs have declined over the past four years. And we don't know why. There are a few possibilities. One is just fewer people are interested in nursing right now, for whatever reason. It also is possible that people are not applying to as many schools because these are applications, not numbers of applicants. We don't have a way to tell if a single person applied to five schools versus only two schools. So maybe people are feeling more confident and they're not applying to five schools. They're only applying to two, and we see that as fewer applications. But that actually seems a little bit unlikely to be a reason. Maybe people are applying to more schools outside of Oregon. It's, that's possible as well. We have no data to assess that. So we, it's really a bit of a mystery about why applications are down. But it is worrisome. And, you know, overall, this means that Oregon is pretty heavily reliant on nurses educated in other states moving to Oregon for their jobs, for their practice. And, you know, this is a pattern that we have seen among a number of states around, generally, the Western states that have historically had kind of high rates of in-migration. You know, back in the old days, it was the Sunbelt states, and everybody was moving to Sunbelt states, which could then rely on this flow of nurses coming in from the Midwest and the East Coast who didn't want to be in cold climates anymore and moved to the, to the Southwest and to the West Coast in general. But, and Oregon has benefited now actually, you know, from continuing migration into the state. But if that migration into the state slows down, then Oregon does not have enough educational capacity to meet its own nursing workforce needs, which is something that's worthy of trying to address and trying to make some improvements on. Some more conclusions. So the licensed nurse workforce in Oregon is not as diverse as the state's population. The good news is that the current nursing student population more closely resembles the diversity of the state. There is still a big gap in gender diversity or gender representation in nursing. Nursing tends to be less than 20% male, both among students and among the whole workforce. And so there is still a representation question in gender. But for race and ethnicity, the student body is looking pretty good. But there is a real need to make sure we retain those students and have them successfully enter the workforce. The nursing assistant and LPN workforces are actually, have more people of color than the total population of Oregon. And this is, in many ways, good news because that is a diverse workforce serving the population. However, we also should note that these are the lower-paying jobs within the nursing profession. And so having more people of color concentrated in the lower-paying jobs is something to be attentive to and thinking about how to provide opportunities for advancement and ensuring that those jobs are paying a living wage and good benefits so that, that people are able to support their households from this work. The RN and NP workforces, the advanced practice workforces, are less diverse than Oregon's population, which is very consistent with what we see in national trends, that the more education that is required for the job, the fewer people of color we see in the job. And so that really speaks to the need to support career advancement and educational advancement. And RN students have become more diverse over time. So progress is being made. So if the glass is half-full there. And LPN students also become more diverse over time. So in thinking about workforce retention issues, there were a number of conclusions or recommendations that we wanted to bring to the fore on workforce retention. And we started our recommendations with workforce retention intentionally. Because there is a bit of a concern about a leaky bucket. And if you have a leaky bucket of nurses, you can keep pouring new nurses into the bucket. But if you're losing them at too fast a rate, you don't refill your bucket. So we really do need to think first and foremost about how do we plug the holes in the bucket. And there is a lot of activity underway to try to do that now. But, you know, the more that we can do, the better. The mental health and the well-being of nurses in Oregon, and really nationally, has to be prioritized and supported. Employers are doing a lot, and they really need to continue to focus in on that. They need to continue to, continue their efforts and identify new opportunities in that area. And in the detailed recommendations, we point to some resources and strategies and various national guidelines and recommendations about approaches to consider if they're not already being done in the organization. Employers really need to focus on creating healthy work environment interventions that will support the health and well-being, not just of nurses, of the entire workforce in the organization. Because attrition of other staff, you know, respiratory therapist or radiology team or janitors or food service, all of those things play together and can create more stress for the entire workforce. So some of the areas that we know from the literature for nursing are very important is supporting professional autonomy, making sure there are adequate staff and resources, and making sure that there are good working relationships between physicians and management. There are a number of things that Oregon's government can do to support employer efforts. The Oregon Wellness Program, which was established in HB 4003, can be expanded. It certainly should be maintained. Creating incentives or resource guides or seed funding to help support workplace health programs and professional, kind of various workplace culture improvements could be valuable to employers to help support their efforts as they're trying to retain their workforce. And we had a number of recommendations around the education pipeline. First and foremost, the nursing workforce comes from the K-12 education pipeline. And that, to address that, we need to prioritize the resources in K-12 for students, especially for students from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds who might be fantastic nursing professionals and need opportunities and mentorship in order to move into the field and be successful. So mentorship programs have been shown in a number of studies to be very successful for aspiring professionals. Shadowing opportunities for people to learn about professional opportunities and careers in healthcare. You know, there are a lot of different strategies that K-12 education can undertake. It was really honestly, like beyond our scope to get into the broader issues of K-12 education. But, but in general, the equity of education and the success of the educational system in K-12 in preparing people to go into scientifically-oriented professions is, you know, needs to happen. But that was kind of outside our scope. So we'll let an education committee or education study go deal with K-12. We do also recommend that, that the high schools and also post-secondary education institutions can do more to help students get into nursing education and be successful in that education. And there are a lot of strategies for the programs that are currently educating students, which again includes mentorship, often wraparound supports, financial supports, and so on, to help students be successful. There should be more of an effort to standardize prerequisites. The OCME framework has done a lot to standardize prerequisites among the OCME participating organizations. And that framework can be leveraged and should really, really be advanced to try to make it easier for students to move from LVN to RN or to understand the prerequisites that they will need, regardless of whether they go to a public program or private program or LPN versus RN, so that they have more standardized opportunities and don't end up needing to repeat courses because one program has slightly different prerequisites than another program. And educational institutions should develop a number of different strategies to develop diversity pathway programs. And those are things that can be supported by state funding. And in many other states, it has been found that state funding makes a huge difference in creating diversity pathway programs that help support the, the more diverse students and advance, especially first-generation to college students and their ability to be successful. For thinking about the educational capacity in Oregon, we had a number of recommendations. First was to expand the education capacity in rural areas. In general, while rural areas certainly work hard to recruit nurses from anywhere that they can, it's a national job market after all. There is a lot of evidence that rural communities have more success with retaining their workforce when they are able to essentially grow their own from within the community. And that requires educational opportunities for people within the community. So developing and expanding distance-based LPN to RN programs and semi-remote RN education programs can happen. We acknowledge that that is already happening and expanding existent program, existing programs may be more efficient. You know, that said, it is somewhat, it can be expensive to run a rural program. And so there may be a need to have some discussion about the financial requirements to make, to make that happen. You know, the, the, it's not like it's free to go expand a nursing program. There are probably more opportunities to share faculty between the associate degree and the LPN programs, which can help programs leverage faculty, especially if both of those programs are relatively small or if both of those programs might need, you know, somebody who's a specialist in one particular area who could be shared. That can help the programs both grow and be sustained. There is a pathway in Oregon for RN students to take the LPN licensure exam while they are going through their RN coursework. That can enable them to get to work immediately. So I think the, the public comment about the, the difficulty for people who need to earn, earn pay while they're trying to pursue an education is very problematic for many professions, nursing among them. And so having RN students able to take an LPN licensure exam gives them the option to be able to work while they finish their RN education. And there are pathways to do that. That should be expanded and supported. There should be more part-time and evening weekend programs. Again, thinking about the working person who wants to become a nurse, an LPN or an RN that requires post-secondary education. Having all the programs, the traditional, you know, nine-to-five, Monday through Friday hours is very challenging for somebody who has a job and has to support their family. So there's opportunities to expand part-time and evening weekend programs. Support services for students is very important, especially for first-generation to college students and underrepresented in healthcare populations. There are a lot of great examples that we've identified, most of which I believe are listed in the report. And we need to think about the pay for faculty. And this is, this is tricky. We acknowledge that, that within the public institutions, there is a tension between wanting to pay equitably across different departments with the philosophy of a professor in any department is being a professor. And the responsibilities of that job are very similar. But there is a tension between that and what the market is doing. And if the market is paying a registered nurse 40% more to be a clinician than to be faculty, then that pay equity goal runs in conflict with the need to recruit nursing faculty. We have, and this is not unique to Oregon. This is something that we see in other states as well. And we have seen different strategies that get used. We have seen strategies, especially for advanced-practice nursing, that involve coming up with clinical revenue pathways, kind of like you would see in medicine, to help supplement salaries. There are tax breaks and loan repayments for faculty that exist and can be expanded. We have seen some states or some educational institutions come up with grant funding or partnerships that provide supplemental funds to the salaries to try to, to navigate that tension. And that's something that really requires the engagement of faculty unions or faculty organizations. And that's something that really requires the engagement of faculty unions or faculty organizations in order to determine ways that would be acceptable. We mentioned that there has been a shortage or there are concerns about a lack of clinical placements for nursing students as they are going through their education. In the Portland area, there is a centralized clinical placement system and there is a need to have collaborative groups create similar systems outside the Portland area. Those systems are really neat because they they first create some discussion and collaboration, that being the key word, about what clinical places exist, where there might be some conflicts. But there also have been some interesting case studies where once all the potential open shifts showed up on a spreadsheet or whatever format the clinical group, you know, the collaborative group decided to use. Sometimes it reveals open opportunities for clinical rotations that people didn't notice before. People didn't really quite realize existed. And so that collaboration really serves two purposes. It can identify opportunities and it also creates a collaboration and conversation. Simulation laboratory facilities also need expansion and educators would benefit from enhanced training to optimize their use. And simulation education is not just, we have fancy mannequins and take the students to a lab. There are increasingly sophisticated simulation education opportunities that are simply online web-based tools, having standardized patients, meaning actors, come in for educational experiences. There are a lot of different ways to do simulation and it is a tremendously useful complement to the clinical experiences that students need to have. Also apprenticeships, internships, and residencies are needed. And Oregon government agencies and employers and nonprofits should explore strategies to fund and expand these kinds of programs. There also was established the nurse intern category. And those licensure regulations are in process and they should be evaluated and and really be encouraged to optimize their use because that is essentially a pathway to having an apprenticeship type of role for individuals who can be paid while they are finishing their nursing education. An education program should establish elective courses or consider establishing elective courses in specialties as partnerships with employers and educational institutions. We have seen this in, you know, usually it's kind of one-off stories of, you know, XYZ Hospital realized that all of their operating room nurses were within five years of retirement and saw the problem coming, approached a college or university and said, can we help create an elective with you to prepare some students when they graduate to possibly walk right into the operating room if they would like to do that kind of work? And created a collaborative elective, it was elective course, so an option for students but not required. And that helped create a pipeline to fill that looming gap. And so those kinds of opportunities to collaborate and financially support or support with clinical experience and elective to fill those emerging gaps is known to be successful. And so that should be explored between employers and educational institutions. Let's see, so this this next slide, it kind of is a is a twofer because it didn't make sense to put it on two slides. It just, why bother? So we had a couple of recommendations around the certified nursing assistant workforce. The CNA one and CNA two categories, which have somewhat different but overlapping scopes of practice in the regulations and are fairly unique to Oregon. I I am not, off the top of my head, I cannot name another state that has two CNA levels. And that has created confusion within Oregon. So there is an opportunity for OSBN to examine and simplify what those categories are and help clarify what they really are meant to be. And perhaps do an assessment of whether they are serving their purpose and should continue to exist. And OSBN also should continue the assessment that it is now beginning or has underway around the length of training required for CNA certification, which is quite a lot longer than the federal requirements, with stakeholder input about what is the appropriate amount of training for CNAs in the workplace as needed now. The federal requirements might be too low, technology has changed, the demands on CNAs have changed. But the number of hours in Oregon might be too high. We heard some stakeholders express concern that the number of hours was more than needed. But that doesn't mean the federal numbers are the right number. So I think OSBN has a process underway and they should be supported in in pursuing that question. For the Nurse Licensor Compact, OSBN and the state should also explore joining, joining the Nurse Licensor Compact. But we want to to note that everybody should be realistic about what the compact does and does not do. The compact facilitates more rapid licensure or more rapid travel of people across state lines. So if a nurse is living, say, in Vancouver, Washington and wants to commute to Portland, if Washington were in the compact, which it isn't, but if they were in the compact, for example, a nurse in Vancouver could work in Portland with not, without needing to pay the fee and bother to get another license. You know, right now, the compact states, none of your bordering states are compact states. So, you know, so this really would apply to, say, traveling nurses coming in from other states. It facilitates telehealth for nurses who are in a compact state, being able to easily do telehealth for Oregon patients. But what it does not do is magically have nurses move to Oregon because when nurses do move to Oregon permanently, they still need to get an Oregon license. The compact does not end that. So it solves some problems, but it doesn't solve other problems. There are two problems that it would create that can be remedied or or addressed that would need some discussion. One is that you lose data. Right now, when nurses who are, say, traveling to Oregon or doing telehealth to Oregon patients, they need to get an Oregon license, so you know that they exist. They do the survey, so you know from the survey where they're working, what kind of work they're doing. If they, if Oregon were in the compact, you would know nothing about those nurses. And it's not entirely clear how you would get information about those nurses. The other factor is that the enactment of the compact essentially creates two licenses, a compact license and a one-state-only license, which is an additional administrative requirement or kind of burden and system that OSBN would need to do. At the same time, OSBN would lose licensure revenue from people who are travelers or telehealth workers who would no longer need to get an Oregon license. So there would need to be some discussion about how to relieve that financial stress on OSBN. These are likely surmountable issues but require some realistic discussion about the benefits and the drawbacks and how to best take advantage of it or not, depending on what the conclusion of that discussion and process would be. For the nurse staffing regulations in Oregon, there are a number of recommendations that we had. There is a need to objectively and impartially evaluate the impact of the law over over since its inception. It's one of the oldest nurse staffing laws of its type in the country. And it needs an objective evaluation. It would benefit from that to learn what the impacts have been on nurse staffing and nurse workload, patient safety, most importantly, and nurse satisfaction. Any revisions to the law should aim to increase the clarity of the law and the regulations and the requirements. Support effective partnerships in the labor management collaborative groups that are supposed to be developing the staffing plans and reduce unnecessary regulatory burden. But obviously, you know, there there were, there is regulatory burden, just trying to figure out how to streamline that so that there, it's not overly burdensome relative to the goals of the law. The enforcement should be consistent and there should not be questions in anybody's mind about how it's going to be approached. I know that's easier said than done, but it needs to happen. And adding more structure to the acuity requirements is something that could be considered. The law now says that the staffing plans that each organization develops need to take into account acuity. There are two other states that we know of, Massachusetts and California, where there is a specific requirement that the hospital have a formal acuity system that assesses patients at the beginning of each shift to help determine what the staffing should be in the next shift that's coming up. And ideally, call in per diem nurses or people from a float pool or whatever necessary in order to fill the staffing gaps if a unit has, say, a more acutely ill batch of patients than normal, that there's a mechanism to say, oh, wow, the next shift, we've got a bunch of really complex patients. We need to get another nurse in if we can. And so those more formal approaches to acuity perhaps need some exploration. There also should be an exploration of fixed minimum staffing requirements. That should be done with a realistic understanding of their benefits and potential consequences and unintended consequences. The report refers to the literature on this, which in brief would say that the regular, California is the only state with minimum staffing requirements and they only apply to RN. So the benefit has been that registered nurse staffing did go up. Registered nurse staffing job satisfaction went up and that has been demonstrated in a number of studies. The unintended consequences included that a lot of hospitals actually laid off aides in order to free up budget to hire RNs. So RNs have reported in some studies that they are doing more work that is not at the top of their knowledge and skills because there are not as many aides. And there is actually no evidence that the ratios in California had a causal improvement to patient outcomes. So there may, now, there are a lot of, I could give you all the caveats on this. I've written book, literally a book chapter on reviewing the literature. But I, you know, it's, it's actually a really complex question about how to write those laws and have them be successful in their intentions. It's not a simple solution. There is a need in thinking about shortages to recognize that there need to be local solutions as part of the discussion. Policymakers and employers can support market research to understand the local barriers to nurse recruitment and retention. And a few things that we heard specifically of concern to rural communities were economic opportunities for the partners and spouses of nurses and the need to invest in high-quality K through twelve education and internet infrastructure and other attributes in the community that help attract people to come to the community and stay there. Both rural and urban communities, we heard concerns about the cost of housing and the supply of housing. And I am sure that nursing is not the only profession where employers hear these concerns about the rising cost of housing in Oregon. I think this is our last batch of recommendations is thinking about anticipating future shortages to better be able to respond to them. There, as I mentioned at the very beginning, there really is a lack of data about employer vacancies and understanding of local labor markets. There are a few strategies that could be undertaken to try to get that information. Regular employer surveys could help. Up in Washington State, the University of Washington developed the Sentinel Network of employers that regularly report where they are, what their vacancy rates are, and also emerging shortages. And I believe that these employers are not just hospitals. I think they might even include dental clinics. So they're able to kind of have a pulse on, you know, wow, in this community, we're suddenly seeing a lot of reports about emerging job openings for clinical lab scientists. What's going on with that? Is that an emerging shortage in this, in this region of the state? And so it's a pretty cool program and that would be one that we'd recommend taking a look at. Having data systems within OSBN that support more detailed projections of future supply and demand is important. We know that the data bit system at OSBN is under revision right now, which is hopefully going to remedy some of the data shortfalls that OSBN has right now that I know is very frustrating to them and to the Oregon Center for Nursing. And investing in identifying and understanding root causes of racial disparities in the nursing workforce is important. That work should emphasize identifying successful strategies to expand opportunities for marginalized populations to pursue and be successful in nursing and involve workers from those communities in identifying those causes and crafting solutions. That is our formal presentation and I will stop sharing.
Joanne, there was a couple of questions in the chat that I wanted to make sure that we we addressed. And I think one of them was from Jason, where he was talking about the state of Washington that passed their House Bill twenty-one fifty-eight in twenty nineteen to allocate twenty million dollars each year to supplement salaries of healthcare program faculty. In twenty nineteen, when that bill was going through the Washington State Legislature, we were watching that very closely to see if that was something that Oregon could could also adopt. The challenge is, is that I, and I was just looking it up and I can't remember what it is. And I'll see if I can find it. But in Washington, the state actually has a lot more control over what community college salaries are than we have as our structure in the state of Oregon. So being able to just allocate twenty million dollars to supplement salaries of healthcare program faculty was a lot easier for them to do because of how their community college system is structured as compared to how it's structured in Oregon. And but not to say it can't be done, again, every, I don't believe, like, Joanne was talking about, like, there are issues that are not insurmountable. This is not insurmountable. Actually, none of this is insurmountable. It's just, it's going to be really creative. And then Daniel also asked about, I wonder if a study, if the study looked at pay equity in Oregon and if its implementation or lack thereof plays a role in shortages. We did not look at pay equity in Oregon as part of this study. So, and I don't have any information about whether that has any kind of role in shortages.
Yeah, I don't know that we have sufficient data to answer that question around around pay equity. Let's see, I also am looking up here. So I see a question about the nursing applications. And have there been any studies that have showed growth in other career choices? And, you know, no, sadly not. And and I think the application numbers, it is varying by state from what, from the few states that even collect this data systematically. In some states, applications are rising and have risen notably. And so Oregon may be an outlier in that, although we just don't have enough data to know nationally to what extent there is a trend versus not a trend there. Let's see, Paul Gorman asked if hospitals and health systems use the funding that they're spending on travelers who are very expensive to support growing the workforce in a more sustainable way. And I I think employers are well aware that this is ideally what they would like to do. It's a little bit of a challenge because if you're currently short-staffed, the investment you make in education is a long-term investment and doesn't support the problem that you have today. So, you know, it's, but I, but I do think in the long term that those investments in the long-term workforce do pay off for organizations. But it's, you know, it is a bit of a challenging circumstance when you're in the middle of it. Are there any other questions?
It looks like Laura and Jason both have their hands up.
Yes.
So Laura. Let me lower my hand before I forget. Okay, first of all, Jana and Joanne, I can't thank you enough for all of the hard work. And if there's other, I can't see because of the screen, if there's other members that worked on this, that it's, this is probably one of the the most, I don't know what the right word is, one of the best reports I've ever seen. It's very, it's very extensive. And like you said, I,
Word, word finding, it's comprehensive.
That's it. Thank you. So when I, when I first opened it, it was, I saw seventy pages. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of pages. There's so much in there. So the conclusions and the summary really helps. I did have a couple of comments. Being in Southern Oregon, we're very rural. You know, we have Rogue Community College in in Grants Pass and Medford. And then we have SOU in Ashland. So Rogue Community College has an AA program. And then if people want to go on to their BSN, they can do that through OHSU and SOU. However, some, some just get things through that AA is, it, first of all, it's like forty thousand dollars just to do that. So it's pretty expensive. And when you, you made the comment about the applications declining and, you know, what I've heard and hear from folks is a couple of things. I hear from folks is a couple of things. It is so difficult to get the, and I know basically you have to have straight A's to get in the program. And also the lack of faculty, which I know that we've talked about. Am I, can you guys hear me? I know I'm cutting in and out a little bit. I'm sorry. Okay, lack of staff is, is definitely at RCC. They can, they can't admit very many students because they don't have the fa, the staff to, to take them. And, you know, I personally at Asante down here, I was in the ER with my son one night who was on a gurney in the hallway. And it was not for, it, I mean, the ER was busy, yes, but it was not for lack of beds in the hospital. It was for lack of staff to take care of those patients. And we see that all the time. I mean, it's people, and I think people have a misconception about that. They think the hospital's so full and there's no beds in there. But it's not that at all. It's because there's no staff to take care of those patients in the beds. So I think that's really important. And the last thing, oh, I've talked about this before, loan repayment. And I'm hoping that we can take a look at that provider incentive for the AA program. You know, if people choose, if people choose to do the AA, they're, you know, that, that's great. And, and we need to get these, these AA nurses out there. But you have to have a bachelor's to be eligible for the loan repayment and provider incentive program. So those are something, those are things that we need to talk about. And I, I toured the new facility in White City for RCC. And it's incredible, the healthcare new building that they have. And they had all of these simulated patients in beds. And they, the, the patients that they had, you know, they were robotic, but they blinked. I mean, they were like almost like really people. It was just, it was very interesting. So I, those are just a couple of my observations. Thank you for this. And I also want to thank the advisor group, but I want to open it up to the committee members for any, if you have questions or reflections. And I, I'll go ahead and start with Jason.
Thanks, Laura. And I want to amplify what you said, that this summary, this analysis is just off the charts awesome. Super comprehensive. So thank you for all your work putting this together. As somebody who's kind of lived and breathed the education pipeline stuff for many years at this point in a lot of different fields, I do want to point out that this analysis holds true essentially for every healthcare discipline. Almost word for word, you could say that about every discipline from medical assisting to lab assistants to, you know, eye technicians, everything. It's, it's the same kind of general theme across all healthcare. So I think it's relevant beyond just nursing, I guess, is important. One thing that I, I didn't hear mentioned that I run up against a lot on the pipeline side of things is that part of the difficulty in finding faculty is compensation equity. That is definitely a big part of it. But feeding into that is the accreditation standards of all of these programs. So for nursing, the accredited programs have to follow their accrediting body. And more often than not, the accrediting body mandates that faculty in an associate's degree program, so an RN or any healthcare program needs to have a bachelor's or master's degree, oftentimes a master's degree. And finding nurses who have a master's degree in nursing, who are interested in education, who are interested in taking a 50% pay cut to be in education is rare. And that is really one of the root causes of, of not only the nursing shortage, but in all the disciplines. Yes, it's pay, but part of that pay problem is being driven by that. Those accrediting bodies who have what in my mind is unreasonably high expectations for education standards for faculty. As far as a group like us or Oregon, I think we, states have sway in that discussion more than individual programs. So having PCC reach out to a national accrediting body and tell them that they need, we would like them to reconsider their, their faculty standards is a drop in the bucket. But having a state organization explain the ramifications on the state employment picture and the lack of healthcare professionals in the state has a lot more sway. So I think there is an opportunity to add a stronger voice to those particular discussions, not only for nursing, but a lot of the other allied health fields.
Thanks, Jason. Before I forget, I just, I wanted to let everyone know that we did have an item on the agenda. The, the healthcare workforce occupational profile, we did decide to postpone that till the next meeting. So we do have some more time for discussion. And I apologize for my camera being off. I'm in Brookings and the wifi is not the best here. So I'll probably just keep it off for a little bit. But Manu, I saw your hand up as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and lower my hand as well. It's funny how Laura said that before I started talking, almost with the assumption that I'm going to take over the rest of the meeting with all my questions. And having said that, I do actually have three different buckets of questions. So we'll just kind of start with the first one and then we'll kind of continue to the second and third one, if that's okay. So the first question I had is that from the report on page 23, figure nine, it reports a first time pass rate that had, of the nurse licensing board that has been declining since the start of the pandemic. I was kind of wondering if you can kind of go into a more solution-oriented approach at what can all, you know, all educational programs do. Because it demonstrates that the whole United States has been slipping, not just Oregon. What can states do, in specific to Oregon now, that can look at increasing that, that pass rate for the coming years?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, and, and I think we did not hear a lot of concern about that, those lower pass rates over the past few years. Because I think there is some anticipation, or maybe it's just hope that as education gets back to something more closely resembling normal with the pandemic subsiding or turning into whatever it's going to be, that, that those pass rates would return to normal. And the other, the other thing that we heard from some educators was that the data that we can get publicly is first time pass rates. And their perceptions were that they have a lot, they have maybe slightly more students who it takes the second try and then they pass. But not that they have students who are graduating and never passing at a different rate than in the past. So, you know, so I, I think there might be a bit of a wait and see what happens on that. But what we, what I think we do know from just the general literature is that the more that students have opportunities to prepare and do kind of example tests or preparatory tests, I mean, it's a lot like taking an SAT, right? You might have all the knowledge, but if you've never taken the SAT before, just the format of it can throw you off. And so practice tests and so on are helpful, and those do require money. I mean, to offer those products is financially expensive. So if schools are already strapped on figuring out how to pay for their faculty, then adding on another program that would be nice to have and beneficial may be outside their budgets. And so that may require some budgetary review. Jenna's waving her hand too.
I do. And this, this, I want to make sure that we, we, we cover this. Let's also not forget that, you know, we're talking about pass rates for nurses in nursing school. But let's not forget the impact that the pandemic had on K-12 education. And especially the people that were going through high school when all of a sudden they had to switch to online. The, the scope of this study did not get into K-12 education. What the impact of K-12 education were on its graduates, on teachers, on administrators, on anything around K-12. And yet, the impacts that happen there are going to happen with every single healthcare workforce in the state of Oregon. It's going to show up more prominently in nursing because nursing is the largest of the healthcare sectors. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's wrong to point out that the challenges that we are seeing with the decreasing NCLEX pass rates also can be traced back to challenges that students experienced in actually getting through their high school experience and what students are still doing as we're coming out of the, the panic of the pandemic mode.
Yeah, we also have seen some reports of nursing students. We have better data from some other states that suggested that there were some nursing students who said, I'm going to take time off. I don't want to Zoom educate, you know, which totally is understandable. But it also is possible that students who took a gap in their education, that it somehow is affecting then their readiness for the NCLEX. But, but yeah, so, so I think there's a hope that this kind of blows over, as it were. But as Jana said, we do have this whole cohort of high school graduates who, some of whom are now in nursing school, who we don't really know how this is going to affect their success. And there may be a need, especially in the short term, to put extra effort and resources to making sure that they, they pass the NCLEX and are successful with that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for explaining that in greater detail. The second follow-up question that I had was around, on page 50, it had spoken a lot about emotional support and kind of redefining what emotional support would be indicated. Later on in the survey, in that, in that section, it spoke about how that there was greater support in, you know, with the family on personal levels as opposed to at work and especially the acceptance of it. So I, my two follow-up questions here. Number one is that the, it was originally noted that the survey was sent to 80,000 individuals. And I was wondering, and just for my frame of mind, do we have 80,000 nurses in the state of Oregon that are licensed and practicing? And then the follow-up question to that is how do we really define when, what is emotional support and what qualifies as adequate emotional support? Thank you.
I think we should let Rick take that one since this was the study.
Yeah. So it was sent out to all licensed RNs and LPNs. And with the RNs, it included the advanced practice nurses. And yes, there are 80,000 of them.
That are licensed, but not necessarily practicing in Oregon.
Correct, correct. It was, it was sent to the licensed, the people who were licensed. And we did not define, we did not define what we meant by support. We intended to let the recipients define what they thought it meant to them. And so when you ask them about their, the level of support that they felt they believed they were receiving at work, the majority of respondents said that they didn't believe they're being supported at work. Whereas the majority did believe that they are being supported outside of work, which is primarily around friends, friends, family, pets, those kinds of, those kinds of things.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. Maria, I see your hand is up and I don't, if you have a topic with these, like, would you like to say a thing, then later on I could ask my third question if that's okay.
That'll work if you like. I was just gonna say, because we've heard now, the sort of things that are in this report are not unique to nursing. For example, that there are reflections on the sort of lack of investment in education resources, right? So faculty difficulty in recruiting and retaining faculty in order to educate the workforce. And then also the issues once you're in the workforce. So coming from an education side, which is, you know, my, is going to be my bias, I'm just wondering, are there, are there opportunities or efforts that, that where you could be coordinating with others in the, well, let's just say in healthcare, for example, for a greater push for more resources more generally or more investment more generally in education, K through 12 and post-secondary, right? To ensure that we have a shift in, in how that is valued, which then would address more broadly, not just nursing, but more broadly, what we see in healthcare and behavioral healthcare, right? And I don't know if there's a way to have that more coordinated push rather than sort of piecemeal attempts at how do we fix this, this aspect of healthcare or that aspect of healthcare, why not the whole picture, right?
I'm trying, you know, you're making a lot of good observations and it's like, not sure what I have to add to that. You know, I think that there are, depend, every, every educational institution structures their health professions education differently. But there are a number of schools around Oregon and in other states where there may be more opportunities to share pathways of education for prerequisites to come, you know, work together, to do programs with K through 12 and, and to help facilitate students for considering the full range of health occupations. You know, and, and I think that, that educating potential health professionals is really important in that I think a lot of young people think, oh, because going into the healthcare field. And for a number of people, they think, oh, that means being a doctor. That's not, I don't want to do that, or that's not accessible to me. And, you know, I, I can think of a family friend whose kid during the pandemic finished college and got a job, job like literally doing COVID tests in a laboratory at a hospital and discovered that she really liked working in a lab. And she had never heard of clinical lab science as a field. And right, exactly, it's like, okay, so, and that is in almost everywhere that you go, you hear about shortages of clinical laboratory scientists. So there is a lot more that we can do about trying to partner together educational programs to go and educate prospective students and possibly also more opportunities to streamline and collaborate on prerequisites. So that prerequisites that might be similar between programs, but just different enough to force somebody into a pathway a little earlier than might be optimal for them to see if there are ways to coordinate that. And, you know, and that's easier said than done. And that really is kind of a college by college effort that needs to happen.
Let me, let me, yeah, so let me just clarify that in the higher ed, HECC and the state legislature are looking at those sort of issues in terms of common course numbering and common requirements for certain things. So it's not perhaps out of reach to consider that we could do that, that institutions can have more common and make transferability easier and all of that. I was also thinking though, more in lines, in line of the support that all education in the state of Oregon or the country receives, right? Not just the knowing that there's healthcare that you could go into or knowing that, that making the educational pathway easier, but the support for the institutions that provide the education and some more coordinated efforts to ensure that we have that support.
Yep, all, all important considerations. I saw another hand up a moment ago.
Yeah, I think it was Rachel. And then Rachel, after you will capture Manu's last question. Then we will need to move on to a vote for this study and then we'll get to Neelam's report.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Rachel Curran Henry, she, her, hers, I'm with Aging in People with Disabilities, working on our long-term care workforce strategies and how we coordinate and integrate with HECC, Future Ready, with the Oregon Healthcare Workforce Group. And I just had the pleasure of coming back from a coordinating meeting with Neelam Gupta, who's here and with Jennifer Purcell from the Higher Education Coordinating Committee. And part of what we're navigating is, I just want to, I, I'm speaking to this, to what I heard Dr. Kessler note is that understanding how we look at the entire continuum of care and looking at that entire pipeline and where we need, where we need to have a coordinated strategy is, I think, absolutely critical. And I just want to give an example from what this report is noting, right? So on this report, you're identifying what is the value of the CNA1 versus CNA2 credentialing? And how does this work? That's a great discussion point. And we need to look at that. But we also need to understand how have we, in the absence of having formal kind of career lattices and pathways, it is, we've used it in Oregon, right, as training in long-term care. And then that's your feeder pipeline into hospitals many times, right, into the different CNAs. And so if we change that, if we change that licensing, what are we doing then to develop the pipeline and having alternative types of training and coordinated approaches? So I, I think that's where understanding, you know, one of the, one of the key points that we heard is that part of what states are doing is you have to bring together, understanding how this is so complex, right? This healthcare workforce committee has such an important voice. This healthcare workforce committee has such an important voice. And how is it going to connect with what happens with the industry consortia for healthcare, for directing the future ready work? And thinking about how how these roles and work will 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 intersect, right? And I think that's part of that broader discussion. Behavioral health workforce has its own set of strategies as well. And some of the career lattice work that they're doing, how do we develop that, not just across with behavioral health, but moving across your different types of healthcare and other occupations? So I just want to thank you for the report. We look forward to having a deep dive with the researchers. We had a pleasure of meeting one of your colleagues, Dr. Spence, just a few days ago. And the fact that you do so much work on long-term care workforce connections, we would love to do some follow up, because I'm hearing another item that you mentioned is vacancy information. During the course of COVID, over the past two years, because we didn't know what was happening with staffing capacity, we surveyed our long-term care facilities in Oregon and got vacancy rates. And so we understood where we were having the shortages. That is a wealth of data and information that we could be looking at to help understand the changes that we've seen in our vacancy data. We also have data, I heard asking about cost and wages. We have wage data that we are starting to collect. We have a community-based care wage data project that's coming out. So a lot of these data projects that we have are all connected and need to be part of an overlaying, an overarching story, right? Of how, of how are we looking together? And it's complex, and we need us all here. So I just wanted to echo and thank Dr. Kessler for her comment. Thank the researchers for their work. Thank the, this board and the chairs for focusing on this. And just continue to state that Department of Human Services in its advocacy for ensuring that we have a workforce to serve all of our aging and population in the entire state of Oregon, that we're all growing and and we all need care. We appreciate the work that you're doing, because that, this is critical to that, that pipeline development. Thanks.
Rachel, shoot me an email. I'd love to hear more about your data and work. But yeah, you may have met some of our colleagues at the California Department of Aging that we're working with, Orkiesia Scales at PHI that we work with.
Yes. And we just worked with Orkiesia Scales. I just want to acknowledge Orkiesia Scales just completed for the state of Oregon Department of Human Services a list of policy recommendations, including data collection and policy recommendations. We're happy to share that report with this committee as well.
Hi, everybody. Listen, Laura's lost her email connection. Okay, apparently, so I think it's time, I hate to cut off the discussion, which is very interesting, but it's time for us to call for a vote. So all the members that are online, it's time. Mark, do you have a sense for how we can signify the ayes and nays?
Paul, thanks. My recommendation is to use an electronic hand to show a yes vote. And if if people cannot get their electronic hand up, we can also, as staff, take a scan for anyone who has their physical hand up. It's sometimes more challenging to see than the virtual Zoom hand.
So I take it we're, we're taking a vote on whether or not to approve this or accept and approve this report as submitted. And we can talk about it more later, but this is, oh, there's Laura.
Oh, you continue, Paul. You're doing a great job.
Welcome back. So in pseudo parliamentary fashion, I think we need a motion to approve the report from one of the members of the committee.
I move, we approve the report.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jason. So so the the motion on the table is that we approve the report we just heard about. Can I have some indication of the ayes? How many voted favor approval? And I've got three screens to look at to see who's got a hand up. Mark, do we have any way of recording the number?
We, we do, we do, Paul. I can see, we, and we will do that. I can see one, two, three, four, five.
I think we've got it.
All right.
Yes. And Paul, are you, are you voting yes as well?
I'm voting yes. And then any against, any opposed? Unfortunately, I see you have some hands up, which I think are for wanting to talk. So I need voice then. If somebody's opposed, a member is opposed, please, please let me know. Or send me a chat.
There are no, there are no Zoom hands up, and there are no physical hands up from members indicating opposition.
In that, in that case, the motion passes, the report is approved. And let me add my thanks to Joanne and the entire team and the committee for all the work that's been done on this. I really am hopeful that this will lead to some important innovations and changes in how we're building the nursing workforce and supporting the nursing workforce in Oregon.
And Mark, I wasn't sure if you mentioned this, but for the record, Bhavesh did send me his yes vote before he signed off earlier.
A wonderful, thank you. I did not mention that, Laura.
Okay, all right, absolutely. Thank you all again. I echo what Paul said. Thank you for all the work on this report. As stated, we were legislatively required to do this report. It's a, what was the comprehensive, that was the word they used, Jana. And so with that, we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to Neelam.
I wasn't sure, Mark, what you wanted me to talk about. Yeah.
I'm so sorry, we, we, we had indicated, and it could be either of us, we had indicated that we would, committee, if there was time available still, a brief update on on the other reports that we did not.
Oh, sure, sure. Of course, yeah, yeah. We are working on two other legislatively mandated reports. One is the biennial healthcare workforce needs assessment. We are very fortunate to be contracting with Oregon State University on that report. I see we have our two lead researchers joining us today, Doctors Jeff Luck and Tao Li. That report is due to the legislature by February 1 of 2023. And we will be having a special healthcare workforce committee meeting on December 7th to review that. As well as then the following week, an educational webinar for the Health Policy Board. And then we are also working on the provider incentives evaluation. That is a report that is done internally by by our team. And that is also done every two years and is usually shared with the legislature at the same time as the healthcare workforce needs assessment. That's an evaluation of the incentives that are provided through the healthcare provider program, the how-to grant program, as well as some of the newer behavioral health workforce initiative funds. And then some of the other incentives, such as the rural medical tax credit, the the Scholars for a Healthy Oregon Initiative, that is a scholarship program with OHSU. And then, Mark, is, did I cover it all?
I'm certainly, yeah, that was, that, that was wonderful. Just wanting to make sure that the committee members had a sense of how the other reports are progressing. We've been promising that, so thank you for doing it.
Perfect. Thank you, Neelam. Okay, before we, before we adjourn, any final thoughts from committee, committee members? And if you do have more in-depth questions, we can always get those questions from the committee and follow up with folks and get back to you. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn today's meeting. The next meeting for the Healthcare Workforce Committee will be November 9. And we will see you all again. And once again, expressing my thanks to the, to Joanne and the whole group, Jana, for this report. It's very comprehensive, and I am sure the legislature will be very pleased with the, with the report. So thank you again, and we will see everyone next month.